Cool. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of January 28th, 2021. I'll begin with the roll call. So Mr. Lewis Campana.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Mark Cunningham.
Present.
Jim Benano's here and Robert Tedesco and Margaret are also present. Uh, let me just run through the agenda and what's been adjourned and then we will, then we will approve this. So, uh, on the agenda, we have an administrative item. It's a notice intent from the town board, which we will, um, we'll go through. The project, applications we have in front of us are application two zero three four JR 16 JR Albany's Place. Then we have Lockwood Road, then one Wendover Road, and then a Regaliano subdivision. Adjourned items are Five Ray Place and 291 Main Street.
And also, um, again, the most updated, uh, form that you got, also Kids Corner at 189 191 Brook Street.
Oh, thank you, Margaret.
You're welcome.
Good. So which, uh, minutes are we approving, Phil?
Uh, September 24th, 2020.
So I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2020?
Yeah, subject to the revisions that I provided, uh, earlier in the month. Uh, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next administrative item is regarding a notice intent from the town board. I'll read a few bullet points, um, make a few bullet points describing what it is and then I'll make a motion. So the town board is considering a petition to amend the zoning law to permit fat formula fast casual, quick casual restaurants and studio uses in the town's DSC designated, uh, Design Shopping Center District. The planning board receives a copy of the full environmental assessment form, the proposed local law, including all proposed amendments and a letter from the petitioner in support of the amendments. At a meeting on January 19th, 2021, the town board declared itself its intent to serve as lead agency for the SECRE review of the proposed zoning amendments and scheduled a public hearing for February 9th, 2021. The planning board is an involved agency under SECRE since planning board approval may be required before the proposed uses can be located in the DSC district. Therefore, the town board forwarded a notice of intent to act as lead agency to the planning board to ensure that the planning board has no objection. So my motion is, I make a motion that the planning board consent to the town board serving as lead agency for the SECRE review of the proposed zoning amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and then I will prepare a memo on behalf of the board to the town board, letting them know that you have consented to them being the lead agency.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
So the applications now are-
Think before you go directly to the applications, if you could just let people know how to participate in the public hearing if they haven't done that before.
Oh, yes, so if the viewing audience, if they want to make a comment, please raise your hand and Mr. Tedesco will recognize you and then invite you to make comments.
Okay, so on Zoom, there's a raise hand feature. If you, when you raise your hand, Rob Tedesco will acknowledge you. If you're on a phone, you use the star nine feature. I just want to make sure people understand how to participate.
You're right.
Okay.
We don't want people raising their hands.
But also a star nine, if you're calling in, you, you, you do star nine.
Great. So first application is 2034-34 16 JR Albany's Place.
They're coming on board. Okay.
Good evening, this is Shane Bedali.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm, yes, and I'm here with the applicant Abiney Chapman.
So Shaheen, you, oh, go ahead. I was gonna say you could just go directly into your presentation.
Thank you. So we have before you a, a proposal for a commercial daycare within an existing space of an existing building located 16 JR Albany's Place, AKA 210 Main Street. The proposed space is approximately 1,133 square feet uh, within an existing building with about a, uh, a little over 6,000 square foot footprint.
Excuse me, Mr. Bedali, can I just interrupt for a minute? Have you shared anything with us or you're just, uh, presenting right now?
I could definitely share my screen.
Yeah, if you have something like a plan or something.
Alrighty.
Okay, yeah, sure, that's fine.
So, so I have before you here the pictures of the building. So the space here is the one on the right-hand side here, uh, with these doors. So those would be the main doors to the building. There's also a, a back door located on the upper platform, which is a, a full story above Main Street. So the main entrance to the building is on JR Albany's Place. That's also depicted in this picture at the bottom right-hand side. Um, and then we, we, we also have on this picture, the backside of the building. So that platform that we're talking about is right here and the back door to that space is over here. So there are two exits to the daycare system. And then we, we also just provided some pictures of the adjacent buildings in the neighborhood, which I, I hope the board is, is familiar with. Then it, we, we also provided a, a floor plan, a basic site plan, as well as a, a code analysis uh, for the work to be done. Uh, so here's the floor plan of the space. We're not proposing any work, uh, any actual construction work within the space. It's just a change of use. Uh, this used to be a gym and the landlord, uh, split the space already, uh, previously from that existing gym space and this wall here that separates the tenancy was a new wall previously installed. So all of the work inside of the space is completed by the landlord and we're just hoping to occupy it. And, and there is existing parking in front of the building over here, as well as existing parking underneath the building on the first floor accessible from Main Street. I, I'd like to briefly touch base on the requirements based off the section 12 of the special use permit zoning law. The, the existing lot is slightly larger than 15,000 square feet based off the existing records uh, in the building department. The, the children that are going to be attending the daycare, the idea is to have the parents meet them within the existing lobby, which is located over here, which does have a reception window as well to be, uh, to have, uh, the, the employees, uh, meet the, the children as well as through the front door here. And for the, the parents to walk their children either to a car or to the sidewalk if they are walking or taking public transportation. So the, oh, excuse me. Uh, so it's, it's proposed to operate the daycare from 7:00 AM to approximately 6:30 PM. Um, and, uh, so, so it'll be limited be before that 9:00 PM time. Uh, the daycare is to operate from Monday through Friday. It's proposed to have a total of 32 people within this daycare, uh, approximately four to five employees, with the remainder of that being children. The, the children are going to be fed two meals a day via an electric stove that's going to be placed within one of the back rooms of the building and, and fed a breakfast and a lunch. Uh, there may be occasional, uh, outdoor trips for playground activities, which would be off-site, uh, usually in a public park, uh, but not contained within the site. The existing, uh, space also already has an accessible bathroom and our existing cabinets, which can provide the storage of the dry goods, as well as the food to be prepared on the electric stove. Uh, the existing parking lot does provide adequate parking for our use and we, we have verified that, uh, with the building inspector, uh, inspector as well. Uh, and finally, I'd, I'd like to, uh, inform you that the applicant is going to seek uh, a permit to, a license to operate from the New York State Office of Child and Family Services, uh, as well as, uh, meeting all of the criteria of the Department of Social Services and the Westchester County Health Department. Uh, we, we did provide a cover letter from the applicant, uh, that does explain the, the pickups and drop-offs, as well as the employees and number of, uh, children to be present, uh, and, and just the other forms that are required in the mailing. And, and with that, if you have any questions, please.
Great, thank you. So, um, times for a drop-off and pickup, are they going to be staggered or everyone comes at seven?
Abiney, if you'd like to chime in, I believe the letter does, uh, state that due to COVID, there will be staggering, uh, in order to limit the amount of people at once that are in the lobby.
Yes, um, the parents will have specific time slots for their drop-off and pickup so that, um, everyone isn't coming in all at once.
Sure. But regardless of COVID, that would be the procedure?
Correct.
Okay. Over how much of a timeframe would they be staggering?
Um, over 10 minutes.
Oh, so 10 minutes spacing between each drop-off?
Yes.
Okay. And the same with pickup?
Correct.
Okay.
I just have one question. Uh, this, this probably is not in our jurisdiction as a planning board, but there was one thing that was concerning about the kitchen. It sounded like it was just a, uh, like a household kitchen, i- is what it sounded like. Margaret, is there any, uh, um, permitting or Ansel systems or anything that would have to be, uh, incorporated into that?
Well, that, that is definitely, um, depending on the type of cooking facilities that are proposed, that is definitely reviewed by our, our plan reviewer, um, in terms of whether hood systems, et cetera, are required. So that's a, that's a standard part of our plan review.
Okay.
And that, that would be based on exactly what the applicant is proposing.
Okay, thank you.
What, um, what is the, uh, the capacity based on occupancy here? They said you had a code analysis.
Uh, yes, sir. So the, based off the total square footage of 1,133 square feet and, uh, chapter 10 of the New York State Building Code, which dictates the means of ingress and the occupant load, uh, we have a total of 32 people.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what's, what's there right now? You say, is it empty space?
Yes, it's completely vacant. It used to be a gym that was two spaces put together. Yeah, but it is vacant right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at the parking right now. It seems like there's adequate room to move cars around and, and, um, come in and drop people off. Which, which lot do they move in? They, can you just, can you show me the parking lot? Yeah.
It's a one-way, it's a one-way street too, so it's.
Yeah, there's ample room for pick-off.
And then there's that additional parking here. If we look at this top left picture on the right-hand side of it, this is the driveway that leads to additional spaces, as well as the accessible spaces down here.
Okay. All right, I don't have any more questions, gentlemen?
Questions, sure.
All right, so.
Fine.
This, we have to open a public hearing and take comments from the public. So if you just stand by, Mr. Bedali. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, 20-34 16 JR Albany's Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard on this application, please, um, use the raise your hand feature and I'll invite you to unmute your microphone. Mr. Chairman, it appears that there is no one indicating they wish to address the board on this app.
Great, thank you. So then I will make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 20-34, uh, 210 Main Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pretty straightforward. I think you did a very good job preparing this and presenting it, Mr. Bedali, and hope to see you again here. So unless there's any other comments, I will make a motion to approve this application, 20-34 210 Main Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you all, have a great evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome. The next application is 20-40 60 Lockwood Avenue.
Alrighty. Uh, good evening, board members. Adama Myarano from, uh, Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the applicant and owner, Luigi Rogliano, we are proposing a new single-family dwelling at 60 Lockwood Avenue. Let me go to share my screen. Okay. Alrighty, you can see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So, yeah, so, uh, 60 Lockwood Avenue, the proposed dwelling is situated in the R5 zoning district. Um, we are introducing a new curb cut along the left side of the property. It goes to attach the single car garage. Uh, what we tried to do is, uh, pay close attention to the aesthetics and overall, uh, design elements of the neighboring dwellings, uh, in specific, you know, the, the adjacent dwellings in order to situate our home so that it'll, uh, sit, you know, nicely within the neighborhood. As far as the aesthetics of the home. Again, this is a streetscape showing the proposed new dwelling and the adjacent dwelling to the left and to the right. Uh, the materials throughout the home will be a, a brick veneer along the front elevation and then typical hardy plank white siding, uh, lap siding around the sides and rear. Uh, white AZAC trim, uh, the sopits, uh, white aluminum gutters. The roof will be a, a asphalt shingle charcoal roof. Uh, the garage doors in front of, door are as depicted in the, uh, elevations. The, uh, windows, windows are 400 series Anderson, uh, simulated divided four over, uh, one grill patterns. As well as the back chimney will be a brick veneer as well. The brick is a, it's not somewhat of your ordinary brick. It's a, uh, castle gate brick veneer, so it has some tones of other colors as well. Create a little pop in the, uh, the house. I'm gonna go back to the site plan. So in the site, okay. So, uh, basically in the site, we are, um, we all set the, the houses a little bit in further than what the required setbacks are. Uh, this allows some room on the left-hand side. We're gonna try to, uh, level off the property just a bit. There's, I would say, a garden wall, but it's a interlocking retaining wall on the left-hand side. It's about two feet max in height and then it goes down to about nothing. That is shown on this material page, sorry, which is right here, uh, the left-hand side. As far as the stormwater management, obviously this is a new dwelling, so we are gonna capture 100% of the stormwater onsite. Uh, we did do deep hole tests and percolation tests that the town consulting engineer came out to witness and that's all demonstrated on the site plan. There'll be COTEC units in the front to capture some of the front, uh, related surfaces and then the additional in the rear. The, uh, new, uh, AC units are located on the right-hand side. Those will obviously be screened. Um, there is actually a, a landscape plan, sorry, I'm just, a, a landscape plan provided in the packet by Bob Tremontano. There are no, uh, actual trees that we're gonna be removing. There are just, uh, evergreen plants on the site that will be removed in result of the project, but no significant, uh, trees will be removed in result to the, they proposed action. Let me just see. Then, uh, in regards to the, uh, Architecture Review Board, they did have, basically just the one comment was, uh, to remove, we had shutters on the front elevation. So we removed that and it kind of frees up the front elevation and I think it was a nice, uh, touch and recommendation. There was also, uh, actually a pull-up. Sorry, the landscape plan. Sorry, one second. Oh, it's not in here, but yeah, there's a landscape plan attached in the, in the packet. I had to stop sharing and then load that up, but, uh, there, in the legend, there was a few, uh, I think the items were, uh, not as correct as the plan. So the, the landscape architect updated those items to reflect, uh, the planting plan in, in the, uh, legend. And other than that, I think that's about it. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great, thank you.
Oh, just to quickly, you know, uh, the related, the site pictures, uh, the neighboring dwellings. This is, uh, again, the existing site on the top left. Those are those existing, uh, mature evergreen trees that will have to be removed. I think they're gonna try to salvage one of them, uh, one of the hollies and then try to replant them in the back right corner. And then the rest is basically just a vacant lot. Uh, 58 Lockwood is the house to the right and then, uh, where's it? 62 Lockwood is the house to the left.
Could you just zoom in on the trees on the site in the back?
Sure.
Yeah, the ones that-
And in the rear, you mean, or?
No, in the street view, yeah, those, that's it.
Yeah, so, yeah, those are the evergreen, you know, shrubs that are basically like lying in the middle of the lot.
Right, they're just shrubs, as you said.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Um, as always, good job. I think it looks very handsome.
What's the, what's the square footage, uh, the, in, the square footage, uh, of the interior this has?
Sure, I think it's just below 2,300 square, uh-
Actually, 2,327.
2,327, yes, sorry. So, just over 20, uh, 5,000 square feet, so we're allowed to go just above, yeah, 2,300.
Got it.
Are the, is the ridge height much high, about the same as the building's?
Uh, so to the, obviously, yeah, to the right, it's a cape, so it's higher than that one, but it, it is similar to that, that house on the left. The eve does drop, but it has its, uh, actually, I'll go to the picture, you can kind of see it. There, it does have a very steep roof on 62 Lockwood, so I tried to do the best I can to try to do a measurement from the grade to that ridge height. And it is about similar, uh, with our typical nine-foot ceiling height and then eight-foot ceiling and ridge above that. But we're under, yeah, obviously the max, uh, 33-foot ridge height.
And actually, Eastchester's 33-foot ridge height, I think, is lower than a lot of communities and a lot of communities measure to the midpoint of the roof.
Yeah.
And so the ARB used to really look at ridge heights quite a bit, but I, I don't think it's, they do as much, just because it's, 33 is very reasonable. And when we first proposed that for the town, I, I was really concerned that we'd get a lot of squat-looking little homes, but it seems to work out pretty well. But, um, I, I think overall, it's, you know, you, you're, you're never gonna have a house that really looks towering because of, of that ridge height. Unless it's next to a ranch or something, you know?
Exactly, yeah, no, that's 100% true. Most of the times it's to the middle of the roof line, but in this case also, you know, we're six over 12, uh, pitch on the roof. So the ridge is a lot further back from the streetscape, so it may also not be as like empowering on the front elevation.
That's a good point. Okay, I don't have any further, further comments. I'll open a, I'll open a public hearing then. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, 2040 60 Lockwood Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any members of the public who wish to address the board on this application, please use the raise your hand feature and I'll invite you to unmute your microphone. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone indicating they would like to address the board on this application.
Okay, thank you. So I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 2040 60 Lockwood.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. So you're sticking around, right, Bedali?
Uh, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Okay, cool.
And I just, um, as per the approval.
Oh, yes, yeah, the vote.
Yeah, yeah, I am. Was that comment mark or?
Oh, no, I'm just saying, as per the approval, the, um, um, the landscape plan?
Yep.
Yes, and again, in the gym, you have those in the notes I provided to you. So as a condition of approval, we'll have the typical that we do for new construction. The proposed stormwater management plan will be subject to the final review and approval of the town's engineering consultant. And prior to the issuance of the CO, um, we'll need a letter from the landscape architect certifying that what was installed is consistent with what was, um, approved.
Okay. So with those two conditions, I make a motion to approve application 20-40 60 Lockwood Avenue, subject to those conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good, good luck with it, Lorna.
Looks, looks nice. So the next application is 20-41 1 Wendover Road.
Okay, uh, good evening again. Uh, Adama Myarano from Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the applicant, uh, we are proposing a rear addition and alteration to 1 Wendover Road, in result to the growing family of the applicant. They're in dire need of extending their home and creating more habitable space, both on the first floor and second floor. Share my screen.
Aren't you gonna change the background too?
I was about to say, you know, come on, Dom.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Come on! You've got a substantial viewing audience, they tune in just to see this.
Trying to monopolize the market here.
You raised the bar, you gotta meet the, the expectations now, my friend.
Okay, that'll be good, okay, perfect.
There you go.
I don't have that one up, but please, just kind of haul.
It's kissing over the bell. Yeah.
There we go.
Blowing smoke there, got it.
Okay, 1 Wendover, got it. Okay, so, uh, yeah, so basically what's a little-
Uh, close your, uh, close your background.
Get that, okay. Uh, so what's a little different than this project? Yes, again, we're, uh, doing the extension in the rear of the dwelling, but because it's a secondary, uh, side yard, which is facing a street, which is Mill Road, so the front of this dwelling is Wendover, which we're not proposing any changes. Uh, the back addition, which faces Mill Road, we are extending to the rear and that's resulting in, uh, us coming before you today to get the, uh, approval for the proposed action. So the applicant owners are trying to create the most economical solution in doing so. So what we propose is basically extending the entire width of the rear of the dwelling back about 12 and a half feet. And we're gonna create just a, uh, basic gable on the rear of the dwelling that kind of helps, uh, I guess spruce up the existing condition, other than the hips everywhere. Uh, we'll just put a basic gable on the rear of the dwelling, uh, new windows, new siding. So the siding will be all new lap siding on the side, rear and opposite side, as well as actually the ARB did have a comment about the front, since we weren't doing any work in the front, but we are gonna, uh, replace the vinyl siding on the front so that everything does match. Uh, new asphalt shingle roof. It's a, uh, barkwood color, very similar to what's existing there. Um, the windows are gonna match the existing. There's no dividers, but they're Anderson 200 series windows. Again, the other comment that the Architecture Review Board had was this, uh, left side elevation. This is the elevation that faces Mill Road. We just added a window to the right top side, which is right here. It's, uh, in a bathroom on the second floor that is not really changing, but basically the first floors were, you know, extending out the kitchen, giving them some more habitable space, adding a full bathroom. And what's really, uh, necessary to them is again, extending a bedroom on the second floor and adding additional bedroom for their kids that are occupying the residence as well. Just to get a feel for, so the left-hand, left side elevation again, in this picture number four, is the existing condition. Tried to implement sort of what the proposed, uh, picture number nine, uh, shows. The proposed addition again, doesn't really, uh, not changing much the residence again, just kind of extending it back and, and extending it back and then adding that gable to the rear, which you could see in, in that picture there. Again, a lot of the homes along, you know, Mill Road share this similar condition where the side yard is facing- the side yard is facing uh Wendover and the front is facing the street that they sort of occupy, uh similar to, to Joyce Road as well. Other than that, just related to site features, uh we are capturing obviously the new impervious surfaces with uh new drainage system and uh the new AC units will be on the right side of the dwelling as well. They won't be able to be visible from the uh road at all. That's basically covers it. Uh, any questions, happy to answer. Well, then just really quickly lighting again, just two sconce lighting on the uh rear sliding door that goes out to a patio. There is existing patio. We're gonna be removing it and basically adding the same patio off to the back as well. Okay.
Great, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
It is, I'm looking for a comment. I'm searching, I got nothing.
No comments.
Yeah, it's well, well done. I think you're right. The uh, the change on the, what you can see from Mill Road is sort of minor. I like the way you added it in the elevation. That was sort of helpful to show that.
You could, you did say that the um, the roofing would be, what was it, barkwood? And, and that it would look like the, the current one, but at least in the illustration, it looks like more of a gray roof.
Yeah, sorry, yes, yeah. You're right. So yeah, so actual, uh, sorry, let me try to zoom in on that, but uh, right here. Okay, so yeah, so the illustration, sorry, it does show the grave of that picture. Uh, right there is the actual color of the roof, so like a similar to what exists there, but the illustration has just a the dark gray.
And this, the siding is sort of this uh, the side.
Yeah, similar color of the, the wicker right there.
Okay, good. And the existing is more of a sort of a light yellow, right?
It's a little lighter, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little tone darker.
Okay, okay.
Okay, let's uh, let's do the public hearings, see if there's anyone with comments, so.
One, what, before you do so, one, one last question, uh you may have mentioned this, Adamo, uh, but the, the ARB, what uh, what, what comments, if any, did they have on this uh, on this proposed addition to the house?
It was that window.
Yes, so yeah, it was that window on the front right side. I tried to kind of make a uh, sort of a, I don't know, a uh organized uh, organization of the windows on the left hand side, cause that's facing the street, so it kind of centered. Yes, so I added that one to the right front and then uh replacing the front siding as well.
Got it. Did they have, did the ARB have any other comments other than? Okay.
I believe, I believe, yeah, those are the only.
You know, I, we do include all their comments in your meeting notes as well.
I know, I understand. And, and, and if anyone on this board respects the hard work of the Architecture Review Board, it's yours truly.
We, we all, we all respect that. Maybe just a little more. Um, so uh, public hearing, so I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application two zero dash four one, one Wendover Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Back to you, Mr. Tedesca.
Uh, if anyone from the public wishes to address the board on this application, please use the raise your hand feature and I will invite you to unmute yourself. Mr. Chairman, there is no one who has indicated they wish to address the board.
Seems to be a very limited viewing audience today.
Yeah.
At least once they make comments.
I'm gonna beg to differ. I think it's a very satisfied audience.
Right, I think there's a huge, a huge audience, just no one has comments.
No complaints, everybody loves it.
Adama does such a great job.
They're all, they're all Community Design fans.
That's it. You said it. You said it.
Right, you're like, yeah.
He's been in the neighborhood.
So then, um, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve this application. Two zero dash four one, one Wendover.
Do we, do we close the public meeting?
Yeah.
We did, okay. I don't know if we did.
I'm pretty sure.
Maybe we did. I don't know.
Just grab right past you. All right, so. Uh, so. That's nothing, right? Okay, so, whoa.
What happened? Did, click Jim's frozen.
It's frozen. Sorry, my son's crying.
I thought that was Jim.
Let's see what happened to Jim.
Actually, it's frozen outside, frozen inside.
That's right.
I think it's supposed to go down to fifteen overnight.
We gotta put the fire back on.
The fire went out tomorrow too, yeah. It's gonna be cold tomorrow too, yeah.
And ten inches of snow on Monday.
Yep.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, Monday, Monday into Tuesday.
Yeah.
How do we get Jim back?
I don't know.
Oops, he left. Okay, he'll, he'll sign in again, yeah.
He'll sign back in.
Here he comes.
There he goes. Back.
We needed a little bit of drama here, so.
And let's see. He just needs to unmute.
Yeah.
Kind of unusual because obviously something happened to his screen, but we could.
Yeah, he's got his computer shut down.
Yeah, but, but we could see him like commenting on it for a moment, so that was thankfully he refrained from profanities, uh we would have lost our ratings.
There you go.
I'm back.
Okay.
What did I do?
I think you were just about to approve Adamo's application.
I thought Phil was gonna make a motion to remove the chair.
But maybe, maybe we should have voted to close the public hearing, Jim.
And I will.
Were you rolling back the tape?
So, so then I make a motion to approve the, uh, to approve the application two zero dash four one, one Wendover Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Adamo.
Thank you. Good work, you guys. Thank you very much.
Sure, we'll see you again. Good luck.
Stay warm.
Thank, yes, that's right. Stay warm. All right. Bye.
So the last, last application is two one dash zero four, the Rugliano subdivision.
Yeah, and Jim, don't worry, when you were off, we ran commercials, so.
Good evening, I'm Steve Anderson from Gabriel Seniors PC. Uh, they have a little situation where uh Water Street Rugliano Way uh has to be refiled, the file map has to be filed because uh we're doing longhouse connections for the individual homes. Uh, what happened was uh Water Street had more water mains than were on the record maps. One of them is running parallel above the existing sewer. Uh, so you can't make an easy connection. Uh, we originally intended for a doghouse manhole, which would just slip over the existing sewer main. And but uh because of that pipe running above it and an additional one running just to the to the uh, I guess if you're facing down the street to the right of it, it just makes the doghouse almost impossible to put in or even a new manhole completely without diverting quite a few pipes. So we talked to DPW, talked to Health Department and have talked to Kellard Sessions. And uh, we decided that we would do three separate longhouse connections uh for the lots. The subdivision itself doesn't change at all. There's no dimensional changes. We have to put an easement on uh for the homeowner in case the pipe needs repair and everything uh on the map, but that's the only real change. Uh, so uh Health Department requires this because you can't have a map on record showing that there's a water main and a sewer main. So now the map will show a water main and the longhouse connections, so. Uh, do you need any of the plans or?
Um, now I take your word for it, Mr. Guys, why? I mean, I could ask like twenty questions, but I, I'm gonna sort of leave it up to you, cause you're the expert at this, but I do have to ask you, what's a longhouse connection?
Uh, it's just a long pipe. It's, it's, in this case, it will be uh a, a series of the three pipes to the houses and there'll be cleanouts every uh fifty feet, whatever, and uh they'll be in a manhole because it tends to that trucks will drive over cleanouts and the pipe will get broken and everything. So in this case, the cleanouts will actually be in a manhole and protected, so, so, you know. So there shouldn't be any maintenance requirement on them, so the cleanouts are there just in case, you know, plumber has to snake uh through the pipe at this clock, so.
Right, and that manhole is obviously in the street.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I, I have to confess, I'm slightly disappointed. I thought this, uh, the, the reference to the longhouse might be some sort of tribute to the Native American tribes who lived on the land beforehand, but apparently not. All, all, all of the additional work that's been done, it really has uh little or no effect on the appearance. This is all subterranean, yeah, so, okay. But obviously necessary to have a correct plan.
Right, so if that viewing audience is still around, let's see if any of them have questions about this. I'd be surprised, but I make a motion, I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application two one dash zero four uh Rugliano subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Hold on, let's see what we got.
Any members of the public wish to address the board, please raise your hand. It does not appear as if, if there are any members of the public that wish to address the board on this application, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Ron. So I make a motion to close this public hearing uh on this application. Twenty one dash zero four Rugliano subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I make a motion to approve this application twenty one zero four Rugliano subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Great, that's about it, guys. I know we wanted more, but I'm sure we'll make a move later on. Um, so I make a motion to close the Planning Board meeting of January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, guys.
Oh, that was a great meeting. Thank you.
All right, have a good night, guys.
Have a wonderful weekend.
You too.